The regular session of the city council of the city of Pleasanton, Texas will now come to order. The time is seven fifteen PM, sixteenth of October two thousand and fourteen. We'll have the invocation by Pastor Tim Stoker of the Living Water Society, followed by the pledge. Pastor Stoker?
Father, we bless you and we thank you first of all for a land that we live in, for the privilege to live as free people. And Lord, for a government where we have participation, where we have transparency. And Lord, we just ask you to guide and direct the proceedings that are to take place here tonight, both by our mayor, our city council members, the staff, Lord, as well as the citizens that are here to give their voice. Lord, that everything will be done in peace, that everything will be done, Lord, in a way that pleases you. And we ask for wisdom, for equity, Lord, for judgment in these matters that are going to be placed before the council tonight, the decisions that lay ahead of them, Lord, in the time that is ahead of us, that you'll bless and you'll favor this city. Lord, that the citizens here will be blessed by these members, Lord, as they make decisions that will advance this community. Lord, that righteousness will prevail here, that prosperity will come, that peace will prevail, and Lord, that in all things we'll give you praise. We ask it in Jesus' name.
Amen.
You'll face the flag, hand over heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Please be seated. Thank you, Pastor Stoker. Mr. Seitz.
Here.
Mr. Best.
Here.
Ms. Pacifica.
Here.
The only member not present is Mr. Garza. Item number four is consent agenda. Item number A is approval of the minutes of the regular session of September eighteenth two thousand and fourteen. B is approval of the minutes of the special session of October sixth two thousand and fourteen. C is approval of the development plan for MBH number three, Performance five hundred and four one acres track. And the city engineer, you have recommended approval of that track?
Yes.
That is consent agenda.
Mayor?
Mr. Gagos.
I move to approve the consent agenda A, B, and C.
I second.
We've moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda items A, B, and C. Any discussion? There's none, proceed to the votes. If you're in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Item number five is ordinances and resolution. Item number A is reading and adoption of ordinance number fourteen dash one one two zero, amending the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen budget for the city of Pleasanton. And that ordinance is, if I was a little quicker with this iPad. Item number fourteen dash one one two zero is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Pleasanton, Texas, amending the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen budget for the city of Pleasanton, repealing ordinances in conflict and declaring an emergency.
Mayor?
Mr. Gagos.
Um, okay. Mayor, I move to approve the adoption of ordinance number fourteen one twenty, eleven twenty, I'm sorry, amending the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen budget for the city of Pleasanton.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number fourteen dash eleven twenty, amending the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen budget for the city of Pleasanton, Texas. Any discussion? If there's none, proceed to the votes. If you're in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Pose same sign. Ordinance is adopted. Item number fifteen is first reading of ordinance number fourteen dash one one two zero. Closing, vacating, and abandoning a portion of the alley located between Crockett and Market Street from Highway ninety-seven to Fifth Street in Council District Number Two, providing for the terms and conditions of said closing, vacating, abandoning, directing the city manager and city attorney to negotiate with adjacent Saint Andrews Catholic Church for the purposes of purchasing said portion of the alleyway as requested by Saint Andrews Church for financial consideration.
Forty-three here.
Fourteen eleven twenty-one. What would really help is if you'll give me a page number.
Forty-three.
Nope, it's not page forty-three.
It says here. It's either forty-two then or forty-four. It's usually either, but it says forty-three. Yes.
If we could speed things up.
I'll get you. It's forty-three.
If you can find it, be my guest.
Here.
Here we go. Ordinance number fourteen dash one one two one is an ordinance of the city council, or the city of Pleasanton, Texas, closing, vacating, and abandoning a portion of the alleyway located between Crockett and Market Street from Highway ninety-seven to Fifth Street in Council District Number Two, providing for the terms and conditions of said closing, vacating, and abandoning, directing city manager and city attorney to negotiate with adjacent Saint Andrews Catholic Church for the purpose of purchasing said portion of the alley as requested by Saint Andrews Catholic Church for financial consideration, containing a repealing clause, containing a severability clause, and providing for an effective date. That's just a first reading. Item number C, five C, is the first reading and adoption of ordinance number fourteen dash one one two two, closing, vacating, and abandoning a portion of Fourth Street located between Crockett and Market Streets in Council District Number Two, providing for the terms and conditions of said closing, vacating, and abandoning, directing the city manager and city attorney to negotiate with adjacent Saint Andrews Catholic Church for the purpose of purchasing said portion of the street, reserving a utility easement as requested by Saint Andrews Catholic Church for financial consideration. And ordinance number fourteen dash one one two two is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Pleasanton, Texas. Closing, vacating, and abandoning a portion of Fourth Street located between Crockett and Market Streets in Council District Number Two, providing for the terms and conditions of said closing, vacating, and abandoning, directing the city manager and the city attorney to negotiate with adjacent Saint Andrews Catholic Church for the purposes of purchasing said portion of the street, reserving utility easement as requested by Saint Andrews Catholic Church for financial consideration, containing a repealing, or repealer clause, containing a severability clause, and providing an effective date. Again, first reading. Thank you, Mr. Best. Item number six, citizens' comments. If you're a citizen of or taxpayer to the city of Pleasanton, you may speak at this time. Please keep your comments to three minutes and know that council and staff may not respond. There are three people in there, and first one is Ms. Partida. Yes, ma'am, if you'll please come.
I'm Abby Partida, and I'm, I live on three oh seven Re Street, and I just wanted to talk about that drain that goes through the back of my house in three oh seven Re Street. It always gets flooded, and it hasn't been cleaned, and it's filthy and dirty and mosquitoes and whatever, because that water stays there. The drain, all that water that comes from the cemetery, it goes right to that drain, and it just plugs up, you know, and the water just stays there. It raises up. This last time, I nearly had the water inside my house. It was, I mean, it just stays there because it gets flooded. And all that stuff that goes into that drain, it just blocks it, and that water comes back. And they were trying to build another big drainage across the street from the fire station to the Arguihos or property, or whatever it is on the other side, but it has never been built, or whatever that we're gonna do there.
Thank you.
Okay.
You hear the comments? If none, proceed. Item number seven, which is departmental reports. Mr. Pearson?
Mr. Weezer will give the public works director's report this evening, followed by Mrs. Guthrie, our librarian, update on the electronic book inventory and the number of uses that have increased by our citizens, and then we'll follow with the manager's message to that point.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council.
Evening.
Good evening. At this time, all wells are operating at a hundred percent.
The total production for the month of September was at sixty-two point eight million gallons with an average daily production of two point one million gallons. The electricity department replaced the five water services on Main Street between College and Adams. This will complete our utility upgrades for this section and the preparation for our upcoming street CIP. We are also currently in the process of bidding out for the Crestline Elevated Storage Tank and nine bore sites needed for our upcoming water main project, which starts at the Hopin Water Well and extends eastward to Highway ninety-seven corridor, ending near IH thirty-seven. Our street department crews continued mowing the roadways and tree trimming. They finished some trench repairs on Pulliam and Oak Valley. Since these repairs, we have identified a few more spots on Pulliam that are also needed. Senator and I have just completed a list of fifteen proposed intersections for the fiscal year to be reconstructed using hot mix. We are now working on a timeline and cost of materials. Our parks department, along with Robert Garcia and Joe Alvarado, finished up the slide installation at the place gate. Also, Ray Rodriguez of El Castillo donated and delivered approximately three tons of white sand, which we use to top off the place gate area. Our in-house electrician crew with John Rainey installed ten new light fixtures and support brackets to the basketball courts at the River Park, provided a bright setting for the national night out at the River Park. For the past few weeks, John Rainey and I have been working on completing the lighting specifications for the River Park soccer fields. Through this, through his research and our discussions with several vendors, we were able to finalize some specifications we felt were most cost-effective. We completed these specs on Friday and have advertised for bids as of yesterday. We are now in the process of getting quotes for three companies for the installation of these lights. We felt that the magnitude and the heights of this job required more expertise rather than to try to do it in-house. Our wastewater plant will be working on replacing bearings to rotor number three. Alpha Machine Services is scheduled to do the repairs. The crews also continue to assist the custodians clean and set up special events at the community center. I complete my report.
Questions for Weezer? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Guthrie?
Good evening, Mayor and council.
Evening.
I know you all have this report in front of you, but I want to go over a few things, if you'll bear with me. On the September statistics, I'd like to point out that our circulation last month was four thousand four hundred and nineteen, where last year, that same month was two thousand five hundred and five. So if my math is right, which I don't guarantee, that's a fifty-seven percent increase?
Sounds like it to me.
Sounds good. Well, you're the math person, so that's good. And our year-to-date, also, you will notice that it's forty thousand six hundred and thirty-two over thirty-five thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight last year, which was about seventeen percent. New cards that we issued this last month was a hundred and forty-four, as compared to the same time last year was seventy-seven, so that's almost double. That one got almost double. And our patron count has gone up also from two thousand four hundred and seventy-seven to six, four thousand six hundred and sixty-seven, which now is a lot of numbers, but that shows quite a good increase that we have. I do need to make a correction also on the report, the written report, where I put that the auction and salad election made over fifty-five hundred dollars. After all said and done, it was over sixty-one hundred dollars. So, that's good news. And we are working, I have to invite everybody, we're working on our Halloweeny pet costume contest and weenie dog races, and that's gonna be held November first because of Cowboy Homecoming and the Chamber Market Days and everything. It kind of bumped us another weekend. So if anyone would like to come and play, please do, you know, bring a dog, don't bring a dog, doesn't matter, bring kids, whatever, come and have fun. And this also isn't on the report, but I think most of you probably know that Catherine Garrett has been out of the office from surgery. She got home Monday, and I talked to her today, and she said she's doing, feeling much better. But of course, she's still gonna be out six weeks at least, so we have our fingers crossed for her. Now, I know that Mr. Pearson wants me to really talk about the self-check checkout machine and also drew up a self-check comparison to what, to what we physically check out ourselves. And the percentages out the side, which I had no explanation for you guys for, is the percentage of checkouts, of our total checkouts. And you can see it's steady from April, May, and June at four percent, July it was six percent, and then August it just went, took a nosedive. And I think that may be because mainly youngsters use their self-checkout because it's kind of like a game to them. And of course, in August, they're all getting ready to go back to school and all that sort of thing, so. But in September, it went back up to eight percent. Now, if we could just teach this machine to put up books, answer the phone, process materials, and all that, we have it made.
Wait, you're wishing yourself out of a job.
That's true. And we, like I say, mainly the younger people use it, but we have, of course, we have people all ages using it, and it's quite a tool, but we have had people that if we pointed out to them or suggested to them, they go, "You don't want to wait on me anymore?" No, that's not what we're saying. So it's just, different people, of course, have different attitudes toward it, but, like I say, good tool, but it doesn't replace the one-on-one that a lot of people prefer, so.
Questions for Ms. Guthrie?
I have one, Mayor. What's the actual numbers, Ms. Guthrie, in this last month at eight percent that used the automatic checkout?
We had, eight percent was two hundred and fifty-one.
So two hundred and fifty-one persons used the automatic checkout?
Mm-hmm. And we had like, we had over three thousand.
In a twenty-four day month, that's about ten patrons a day. Cut it off. There are people arguing. Good.
And we didn't move it so it's more visible. We put it up closer to the checkout desk where it's more visible.
Yeah, I was gonna ask where it was located. Maybe that'll help them break in.
I think so.
Because they can always talk to you.
That's true. I can yell ass. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item number eight, city manager's message.
Good evening, Mayor and council. How are you all this evening?
Good evening. Good and you?
First thing we'd like to mention to you all this evening is the RFP submittals for the Parks Master Plan Consultant. Two staff members and myself principally that will be in charge of this project, which Mr. Peterson and Mr. Weezer went through the seven firms that submitted last week. We did it somewhat together, then somewhat separate, and then we came back together. We've selected five consultants to give presentations and be interviewed next Tuesday. We'll hopefully have a recommendation to the council at the November sixth meeting. We had some excellent, excellent submittals. As you may recall, we interviewed three consultants for the fire station out of eight that submitted, but we felt like we wanted to hear from five of the seven on the Parks Master Plan. The street CIP program, we have our initial figures on the different configurations or the different processes of how to reconstruct the streets. Right now, we will tell you that it looks promising that we may be able to go ahead and include Main Street, Main Street, all the way to Bensdale or Commerce with the Old Town Street lamps, sidewalks, curbs, gutters, and driveways. We're happy about that. Right now, we have, Mr. Medley and I have instructed the consultant, as of two weeks ago, to begin design. We are going to select one more street out of the ones that we looked at potential cost sum, and we'll be discussing that with the council to see if they agree with our assessment and if they want to move forward. Right now, the weight between the recommendations on the reconstruction of the streets has to do with taking the streets completely brown and bringing all brand-new material in, or taking the streets down to a shorter depth and recycling the existing material that's coming out, okay? Some of it will be one way, some of it will be the other, and I really appreciate the input from the council members who have visited with me about this. Soccer field lights, we are out to bid for the lights on the soccer field. As you may recall, we're required under the agreement with the school district to provide a UIL standard field, which describes between twenty-seven and thirty candlelight power. We were shocked when we looked at the lights last year with a lighting consultant that we had eight candlelight power. We were not holding our end of the agreement up. This is another part of taking care of what we have in our park system. Obviously, you all see the result at national night out of the lights on the basketball courts and how that number three pavilion looks with lights underneath it being protected, and I have to say, it's about a thousand percent improvement. Those lights are on early in the morning for our folks who visit the park and walk, too. We're very proud of that. The committee appointed by city manager's office has been reviewing the first draft of the Employee Personnel Policy Manual that will hopefully be submitted to the council sometime in February or March upon review and any changes by our city attorney. They are going through this manual, chapter at a time, paragraph at a time. Some sections go quicker than others. I think we're up to about chapter four, if I'm not mistaken. That committee is comprised of our human resources specialists and select department heads. That meeting takes place every Tuesday morning at eight-thirty. Household hazardous waste cleanup. You all have your announcement in front of you, okay? The county and the city of Pleasanton will do this in a joint effort on November eighth, starting at nine AM through one PM. Right now, our plan is for the patrons or the citizens of the city of Pleasanton and its ETJ will be verified through a current water bill or utility bill that matches the driver's license of the person that is showing up. We will have a co-mingled effort between Addis Coast County Sheriff's deputies and the city of Pleasanton Police Department on this side of the bridge on Hunt to decide who gets in and who doesn't get in. Right now, we've secured not only the household hazardous waste cleanup, but two complete trailers for recycling of tires, which is a problem in our city and a challenge, and the associated personnel with the cleanup or environmental company will be there, and associated personnel from the city of Pleasanton. Right now, our plan is to set up in that open area off of Hunt and let folks transition through depending on what they have, and exit hopefully back out onto Adams, get out of the park. So we're very excited about that. I know it's been a long time coming, but hopefully we'll have a great turnout. And we will ask that the news media publish for us and with the criteria on what it's gonna take to contribute, and we've looked at a lot of things, you know? What is household hazardous waste? We think in a five-gallon bucket or smaller, not a fifty-five-gallon drum. So obviously, with the county, there'll be a little different on how they're gonna address some things, but I think it's great. The synergy and the power of governmental entities working together and the fact that the county decided to work with the city and the city decided to work with the county really got the attention of some environmental companies, and we're really proud of that. Mayor, I'll stand for any questions or comments.
Any questions for Mr. Pearson?
Mayor?
Ms. Israel?
Yes, I just have two. And the first one would be, since it'll be until one o'clock, how will we control the line that hasn't been serviced yet when one o'clock rolls around?
We're gonna put a roadblock up here at Kadobe's. No, I'm just kidding. I had to say this. No, we will work those logistics out, but then anybody that's in line before one o'clock...
Well, I just don't, I just don't want to have to get violent, you know?
No.
Lose my place in line.
So you're gonna be the five-till-one crowd?
I hope not. And the other...
Let's write that down. This is real, five-till-one.
And the other, the other item I wanted to bring up was there's been a multitude, as I'm sure you're aware of, questions about the specifics for recycling, and I actually had Ms. Samson share something with me today that would, that's awesome, and if possible, if the Republic allied people would continue to follow through that, I think that's a fabulous way to get the word out. There was a one-eight-hundred number that dialed and left an extensive message for her, so I hurried home to see if maybe I might have one on my machine, but not yet. So just let me tell you that I think if they ever thought of a greater way to go ahead and spread the word, because there is a lot of variance, and if people start getting things thrown out on their lawn because it doesn't meet specifications, when truly what they're just trying to do is be good stewards, I think that, I think that spending that extra time and educating them is better. At least, at least they'll take it as garbage if it's not recycled, so.
Well, and that, we knew we would have some of this when the ninety-five-gallon recycled containers went out. Some people think it's a second trash can.
Absolutely.
But it does say recycle on that lead, but we have advised allied waste to not pick those cans up. We will not have other citizens in this town paying for that second can. So we hope to continue to educate people. It is a sharp learning curve because forty-two hundred cans went out in about seven days, and boy, did they get it done. I mean, but we will, it is gonna be an educational thing, and I appreciate those comments, and we will talk to allied...
Yeah, and I think that was really great. Thank you, sir.
Any comments or questions for Mr. Pearson? Thank you, Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item number nine is mayor's message and announcement. The only thing I have is I want to say, Chief, you and the police department, PD, or the fire department, all the volunteers from the city and anybody else, it was a very successful national night out. And if you haven't been to one in the last two years, this is the second annual, you need to make it a point next year to go out. It's a nice laid-back event. You'll run into some people that you probably haven't seen in a while. It was a lot of fun. I thank you for that, Chief. Item number ten is report from the Addis Coast County appraisal district, our representative, Mr. Joe Rodriguez.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I think since we fixed the roof on that building, everything's been going real smooth since then. And the last couple of meetings, the only thing we've really had is we've re-contracted a different firm to do the outside appraisals, which is gonna take effect in twenty-fifteen, and we had a couple of special meetings to redo the chief's appraiser's appraisal. And I was gone for a while, and I think I missed one of the reports here, but I didn't miss a meeting, as far as I know. And that's all I have. Everything seems to be going smooth over there. We're fully staffed, and I don't think we have any problems.
Good. Any questions for Mr. Rodriguez?
Mayor?
Ms. Israel?
I understand that there were some issues as far as all our properties having actually received appraisals and that actually they're going out now. Do you know anything about that?
No, there was one, in fact, it was here in the reports, one gentleman, there was, it was either an error in reporting or he failed to, I forget exactly what it was.
I thought it was like two hundred and some odd properties, and then there were some losses as well. I didn't see it in this report, but I actually saw it in another one.
Yeah, I think it was way back, I think like...
No, I think this was just recent. If you would just do me a favor and find out something about it and email me, I would be fine with that.
I'll get that.
I appreciate it.
Any questions for Mr. Rodriguez? Rodriguez?
Yeah.
Item number eleven, discussion and action to allow the Pleasant Chamber of Commerce temporary street closure of East Hunt Street between North Chapman and North River Street from six PM on Thursday, October twenty-third, two thousand and fourteen, until two AM on Friday, October twenty-fourth, two thousand and fourteen, for the forty-ninth Annual Cowboy Homecoming Festival Kickoff Street Dance, which will be held at Kadobe's. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor, council.
Good evening.
The Pleasant Chamber of Commerce is requesting a temporary street closure from six PM on Thursday, October twenty-third, two thousand and fourteen, to two AM on Friday, October twenty-fourth, two thousand and fourteen, for East Hunt between North Chapman and North River Street. This is for the forty-ninth Annual Cowboy Homecoming Festival Kickoff Street Dance, which will be held at Kadobe's.
Okay. Mr. Gagos?
Yes, I move to approve to allow the Pleasant Chamber of Commerce request for the temporary street closure on October twenty-third, two thousand and fourteen, from six PM till two AM on October the twenty-fourth, two thousand and fourteenth, for East Hunt Street between North Chapman and North River Street.
Second.
We've moved and seconded to allow the Pleasant Chamber of Commerce request for a temporary street closure on October twenty-third, two thousand and fourteen, from six PM till two AM on October twenty-fourth, two thousand and fourteen, from East Hunt Street between North Chapman and North River Streets. Any discussion? If there's none, we proceed to the vote. If you're in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Pose the same sign. Motion carries. Item number eleven is discussion and action to allow temporary closure of Fourth Street and Fifth Streets between Crockett and Market from nine AM until two PM on Sunday, October twenty-sixth, two thousand and fourteen, for the annual Saint Andrews Church Turkey Dinner. Again, Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. The Saint Andrews Catholic Church has requested street closures for their annual turkey plate sale on Sunday, October twenty-sixth, two thousand and fourteen. The streets they're requesting to temporarily close are Fourth and Fifth Streets between Crockett and Market Street. They're requesting the streets be closed from nine AM till two PM.
Okay. Mayor? Mr. Gagos?
I move to approve the temporary closure of the streets on October the twenty-sixth, two thousand and fourteen, from nine AM till two PM for the annual Saint Andrews Church Cath, uh, Saint Andrews Church Catholic Turkey, uh, Turkey Dinner, and those streets be Fourth and Fifth Street between Crockett and Market.
We've moved and seconded to approve the temporary closure of the streets on October twenty-sixth, two thousand and fourteen, from nine AM to two PM for the Saint Andrews Church Turkey Dinner, those streets being Fourth and Fifth Street between Market, Crockett and Market Street. Any discussion? If there's none, proceed to the votes. If you're in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Pose the same sign. Motion carries. Item number thirteen is discussion and action to accept the bid recommendation for the Addis Coast River and Bonita Creek floodway maintenance project. City engineer?
If I may comment, I wish Mr. Garza was here for this item. This has been so close...
This has been so close to his heart.
Yeah.
And I know it's been a long time coming, but we think we have it right, and I'll turn it over to the city engineer.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We, of course, this is the second time that we bid the project, and we had two very close bids. They were within $50,000 of one another, and the, the firm that, that I'm recommending is Austin Filter System from Austin, Texas. They worked with us once before on the landfill project back in, I can't remember what year, 2008 or, or '10, somewhere's in there. And with that, my recommendation is, is that we use Austin Filter System to do the project for a base bid of $845,231 and the alternate bid of $148,294.
Mr. Meding, could you tell the council briefly where this is going to start, on the northern end of the river, where it will end on the south, and then how far at Bonita Creek this project will take us?
On the north end of, of the river, it will begin a little bit past where the entrance to the, to the country club is, and on the south end, it will go basically to where Eighth or Ninth Street would intersects Adams, which is past, past those oilfield trailers that, that are up of Adams, a little bit, a little bit further past there. And it will go up Bonita Creek to behind HEB and where Bryant intersects the creek, more or less, which is Daniel Salsada's house, is, his backyard is right where, right where the creek bends and, and the Bonita Creek clearing will stop, right there.
Mayor?
Thank you. Ms. Israel?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept, um, accept the bid recommendation for the Atticosa River Bonita Creek Floodway Maintenance Project and to select Austin Filter Systems Incorporated to perform the work for a base bid of $845,231 and the alternate bid of $148,294 for a total price of $993,525. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the recommendation for the Atticosa River and Bonita Creek Floodway Maintenance Project be awarded to, or for the City of Pleasanton to select Austin Filter Systems Incorporated to perform the work for a base bid of $845,231 and an alternate bid of $148,294 for a total price of $993,525. Any discussion? There's none. Who proceeded to vote? Those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Meding. Item number 14 is presentation of the charter review committee's proposed recommendations to the Charter of the City of Pleasanton. Chairman, Mr. Hernandez, is not here.
Good evening.
Kenny Hernandez couldn't be here tonight. I'm Sandra Holland, the vice chair, and
this report was prepared by Sue Samson, the secretary. This is a summary of our 2014 Charter Review Committee. The 2014 Charter Review Committee was comprised of Rosie Dillard, Edward Zamarepa, me, J.R. Pacheco, Travis Hall, Sue Samson, and Kenneth Hernandez. The committee met a total of nine times at the Civic Center during the period of April 24, 2014 through September 9, 2014. The city manager, Mr. Pearson, attended some of the meetings and was able to provide answers to many of the informal questions about city business. The committee selected Kenneth Hernandez as chairman, Sandra Holland as vice chairman, and Sue Samson as secretary. The committee discussed a number of issues, with the main ones being whether there was a need to correct spelling and other minor errors in the charter, change in length of term of council members and mayor, increase in amount of compensation for council members and mayor, add a reference to duties of the finance director to the charter, increase the threshold for needing a contract for city improvements, and post certain notices such as new proposed ordinances on the official city website in addition to the current requirement that they be published in the official newspaper in the City of Pleasanton. The committee agreed to recommend the four following charter amendments. Change the term of council members and the mayor from two years to three years and make other associated adjustments. Increase the compensation per regular council meeting of council members to $250 and the mayor to $300. This was based on a review of compensation currently in place for councils in nearby cities of similar size and on a recognition of the time and effort required to successfully perform the duties of the council. It is also hoped that this increase will encourage additional citizens to consider running for these offices. Add verbiage to state that the finance director, as directed by the city manager, shall assist the city manager in carrying out the financial duties of the city. Increase the threshold, threshold for actions of city improvements needing contractual coverage from $5,000 to $25,000. Other issues discussed but not voted for: possibility of removing term limits currently in place for the council, possibility of having city secretary appointed by both the council and city manager, possibility of adding a formal requirement for an annual evaluation of the city secretary and the municipal judge, both appointed positions, possibility of whether there was a need to clarify whether the mayor votes only in the case of a tie vote by council members. The question as to who currently is the city health officer who functions in the event of a major city or county emergency resulted in the recognition that this appointment needs to be readdressed because a great deal of time has elapsed since the last appointment was made. The city attorney had previously advised about typographical errors, and I've just been told they've been corrected. In conclusion, this charter review committee is recommended, recommending those four charter amendments, copies of which are attached, attached to this summary. Approved minutes from the charter review committee will be submitted to the city secretary.
It's a presentation. Any questions from Ms. Holland or the committee?
I have a question, Mayor.
Mr. Gagos?
On the committee's, let's see, where am I? On the committee's recommendation going to the first one for the change of the term council members for the mayor and, and council from two years to three years and make additional associated adjustments, what is that associated adjustment?
They are...
Would probably be for elections and whatever else in the charters in conflict?
With no person to serve more than four total three-year terms, and it should take effect in the May election, the last election, this says. A person may be elected to serve up to four terms as council member and up to another four terms as mayor.
Okay, so if it does pass in May, the council and the mayor that is elected, I know it's going to affect them, but how about the council members that still have an additional year to serve? How is that going to affect them? Does that go into effect in 2015?
That would be something...
Or in 2016, like, for example, Doug and Diana?
I can answer that for you. Last time, whenever we had the term limits, it only affected those people after they finished the term that they were already in.
So then they could be, serve at least seven years instead of the six?
We would recommend that, that the council seek a legal determination from the city attorney on that before they decide to vote on it. It's just the commission or the committee's recommendation to go to two, three-year terms, set out a term, and you can do two, three, two more three-year terms, which is still a total of 12 years, but that determination would need to be made by the city attorney once the council considers whether they want to take action on it.
Okay, because of it, I mean, that's where they would have another additional year because they're still on their two-year term. Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Thank you. Y'all did a very good job.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, thank you so much.
The only, the only clarification I would need, and it would probably require a legal clarification as well, but when it says no person to serve more than four total three-year terms as council member or mayor, would that mean four terms combined council member or mayor, or four terms as mayor solely? That, that kind of language would need to be clarified at some point.
Yes, and, and this is only a presentation. It's not a discussion action item. Those clarifications would be made by the city attorney when and if the council decides to do discussion and action sometime before the end of January, so there could be direction to the city secretary to put it on the ballot for May, and that would be the proper time to, to engage the clarification on that.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Okay, there's none. I want to thank you all, committee, for all that you did. That was a lot of meetings, and you all, you all did some really good work there.
Thank you.
Item number 15, the regular session of October 16, 2014 is hereby recessed to hold an executive session. Pursuit of Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, consultation with attorney 551.01, and real property 551.02. Executive session matters may be acted upon if appropriate in open session. The time is 7:50, 7:00 p.m. Regular session of the city council, the city of Pleasanton, Texas, hereby reconvene 8:29 p.m., October 16, 2014. Item number 18, discussion action concerning the contract for lease property at the airport.
Mayor?
Mr. Gagos?
I move to direct the city manager and the city attorney to proceed on the...
Contract for the...
...lease property at the airport as directed in executive session.
Second.
Moved and seconded to direct the city manager and city attorney to proceed on the contract for the lease property at the airport as directed. Any discussion? None. Who proceeded to vote? Those in favor, motion, please raise your right hand. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 19, discussion action concerning the appraisal of private-owned facilities, privately-owned facilities at the airport.
Mayor, I move to dismiss agenda item number 19. I guess that's appropriate.
Moved and seconded to dismiss agenda item number 19. Any discussion?
That's right.
Those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Oppose, same sign.
Can we get that again?
It was two, three. Mr. Sanders abstained.
I voted, yes.
Oh, did you vote?
I voted, yes.
Which side? I didn't see you.
Sir?
Which side? Did you vote for or against?
For.
Okay. There's a tie, so the motion fails.
Yeah. Mayor, I mean, I'm... Is it to accept the praise value?
Nope. It was just a...
I thought it was for information purposes.
I thought it was to accept the praise value as presented. Do we need, I, I tell you what, for clarification, is there any, do we need to accept this? My understanding is we needed to accept the report as, as we were given.
You didn't, you didn't have to.
Okay.
I mean, you can always do that later, but you don't have, you're not obligated to.
All right. Well, maybe we should have dismissed it. I guess we can postpone it.
Whatever.
That means I can't put it back on the agenda. Someone else has to.
Yep, that does. Well, as of right now, we're just moving on. No actions being taken on item number 19, so item number 20, discussion action concerning the possible purchase of privately-owned facilities at the airport.
Mayor?
Mr. Gagos?
I move to direct the city attorney, uh, city manager, city attorney to proceed on the possible purchase of private-owned property facilities at the airport as directed in executive session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to direct the city manager, city attorney to prove, to proceed on the possible purchase of privately-owned property, privately-owned facilities at the airport as directed in executive session. Any discussion? Who would have thought it would be that hard to say that? Any discussion? Those in favor, please raise your right hand. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 21 is discussion action concerning case number 14-09-0794-CVA.
Mayor?
Ms. Israel?
I move to dismiss this item. Second.
It's been seconded to dismiss agenda item number 21. Any discussion? None proceeded to vote? Those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Oppose, same sign. Item is dismissed.
Mayor, for the record, I'm recusing myself from voting on agenda item number 21.
Okay, you could have just abstained, but that's okay.
Okay, abstain.
Item number 22 is review of the bills. If there is anybody that would like to review the bills, please state so at this point. Not moved to agenda item number 21.
Mayor, I move to adjourn. Second.
Moved and seconded, we adjourn. Those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Oppose, same sign. The meeting is adjourned at 8:33 p.m.